Yeah, good morning. The board met in closed session this morning. Item two confidential minutes were approved. With that, we're going to move on to public matters not on the agenda. Is there any members of the public that would like to address the board at this time? See and none? Board members, any items like to talk about? Moving on, looking for approval agenda.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Forster, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Curious unanimous. And now we have approval of items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Guys are too quick. How about if we do all the items minus item five oh, I'd like to have a vote on that separate. Is that okay with the maker of the motion, second?
Okay. All right. Want to take it right now then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Look for motion to approve the consent agenda with item five oh polled for discussion. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Curious unanimous. Item five oh, I just liked, the reason I had that polled, is the sheriff's office mid-management association, SOMU, signed letter of agreement. I just want a little bit of discussion on it. I think we're not having a retention problem with SOMU. I think we've got roads that need to be repaired. I think they're paved well and my fear is by giving SOMU this all this cost increase, it's going to basically, you're going to have other units come in and it's going to cause a big increase in their costs. So I'd like, that's why I'm asked to have it polled, so I just wanted to be in the records voting no. So I'm looking for a motion whenever, unless there's more discussion. I'm ready for a motion, item five oh.
Who approve?
Motion by Forster.
Second.
Second by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have a no by Axe and a no by Onetto, so a motion carries three to two.
Thought you voted yes.
Me?
Yeah.
No, I'm a nay.
Okay.
You first said aye.
You did.
Did I?
Yeah.
It was a negative aye, I guess.
It was a negative aye. My apologies, well, anyway, I'm a no.
All right.
So thank you for that.
That surprised me when I heard you.
Okay. My mistake. I was thinking about voting aye and a no, how's that?
Fair enough, fair enough.
Uh, moving down, item regular agenda. Item three A, this is two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five recommended budget. Discussion of possible action relative to adoption of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year recommended budget.
Supervisor, did we do public matters not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you have something to talk about Frank or?
No, I just thought we skipped over it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisors, this is the, the next step in the budget process for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This, the budget that you have before you is balanced. It is a preliminary budget and if you recall, you'll approve this. As things continue to come into focus, then final budget will be approved in September. The, the budget that stands before you is pretty much the same budget we had before. There were a few tweaks, but everything was, was pretty minor. Total general fund is fifty-three point one million dollars. Total of all funds is one forty-seven six seventy, six twenty-two, so one hundred and forty-seven million dollars. Any questions, any, yes sir?
Can we look at budget unit two four four zero?
Which budget, which unit is that?
The fire protection.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Is the line correct that we're giving AFPD two hundred and fifty-eight?
That's, that's the number that we gave them last year and we kept it at status quo. If we went to return to a lower number, we can certainly do that and have that put in place by the final budget.
Okay, so that, so our CAL FIRE services are three hundred and thirty-seven?
Correct.
And then, okay.
And then, yes, so the total of that, that department, five ninety-six, nine oh nine.
Okay, so we're going to keep that going each year then?
We can, we can drop it back. The actual that we gave to AFPD from the previous year was four ninety-eight, seven forty, wait, no, sorry, that was rough. The, that we gave to AFPD from twenty-two, twenty-three was two fifty-eight as well.
Okay.
So direction, I'm not sure what it was in twenty-one, twenty-two, we can.
I'm, I'm fine with keeping it, I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a mistake. Because I thought we were just giving him for a one-time this last year to cover there, or was that an extra amount over?
I will, we'll take a look at that and verify and if we have questions, we'll bring it back.
I think compared to some other counties, our DA's budget's a little bit high. And I'm looking at other costs the county has, I'm looking at deferred maintenance in buildings, I'm looking at deferred maintenance on roads. And we talked about putting a couple positions, adding a couple positions for the road department and those were cut due to lack of money or not additional funds at this point. And I'd just kind of like to just, for lack of a better term, not looking for fight, just saying, hey, it needs to be done. I'd like to reduce the DA's budget by fifty thousand dollars, figure it's a starter. That's something I'd like to do in a, in a recommended budget.
What, what's your justification? Because we talked about this when the DA was here.
And I felt like that then, I feel like that now. I think his, his numbers are high compared to other counties and I believe it may not always stand out, but as far as he was saying that he pays his CALPERS, unfunded CALPERS liability. It sounds like other departments do, it may not always be where you can necessarily find it, but it is there. I think is, I think the numbers are high and there's only so much money in our budget and we got roads falling apart and we got to start somewhere. That's my reasoning.
I think his numbers are high, but I think he justified why they're high and that he's bringing in the revenue to cover those through grants and through Mule Creek State Prison.
Supervisor, now I would, I agreed with you until we had that review when he came back after the, and he explained how some of the investigators get paid out of the workman comp. It's all grant related. And he's actually, I think he's now, if you go net-net with his revenue, he's about three point six, three point seven, Chuck, different? In that range.
I think it was around there, yeah.
Yeah, so he's not forty percent high, but he still is higher.
He is higher and, and I'm, and some of the stuff in his original report, especially even his subsequent report, there was some information was it may, sometimes it's splitting hairs, but what appears to be, may not be, doesn't mean it's not happening. It's like it's CAL, the CALPERS unfunded liability, other, other counties, DA's are paying them. And originally he said there's zero grant funding from these other, other DA's departments, well, they get grant funding too. Does he get more grant funding? Absolutely, that's how it appeared. But I'm looking at, I'm looking at bills, I'm looking at roads going, going to hell and, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at where there's money. Public safety has it and there's really, other departments are running really lean, so it's either there, nowhere, or maybe some point, a sales tax increment which may or may not pass. But our, our roads are, and I don't see, I don't see too mu, too much help coming from the state or feds. Our roads are going to hell, it's that simple. So that's where I'm coming from. And we can, we can, we can look at things, legitimize and we can talk about why, or else we can say, hey, we got a problem. We need to take care of that problem, may not always be a perfect world. But it's something I think we need to reel it in a little bit and start putting some more money towards our other items in our general fundings, i.e. roads number one.
Fair enough.
That's my, that's my reasoning.
I'll chuck on, things like the benefits, are those, I thought Todd indicated to me those costs were covered in grants and the money that comes from Mule Creek too, would that pick up the benefits?
Correct, yes, yes, it would. And he, and his, because his total budget is, is, you know, the, the percentage is there coming from those grants, from the reimbursement and the reimbursement pays the, the burdened rate. So he's covered.
Yep, and I, I agree with you, he's high compared to other counties, but he's high and he justified it here when he presented to the board, my feeling.
There is justification for some of it, I don't believe for all of it and it's we got to start somewhere and I think it's somewhere where you just, just saying, hey, enough. And then, then we have the other deal where I voted no on, we got a five percent for SOMU and that's going to bring in other, other departments and our costs are going to go up, are going to go up. And our roads are going to continue to deteriorate. And even, even nibbling here and there won't, won't get enough money for our roads, but it, it can help. I'm just trying to, I'm just, I want to slow the train down, so.
Got it.
Anyway, so that's where I'm at and I'd like to have, I'd like to have a motion on that. If anybody's interested, a yea or a nay?
I, I'd like to stay where we are, Mr. Chair. I think, I think the analysis demonstrated that the high number of staff in the DA's office is due, is kind of an artifact of the fact that he has all these special grants for prosecuting and investigating certain types of cases like the child support and workman's comp.
To a certain degree, but I mean, it's, even if you take all, if you remove those numbers, I think his numbers are still high.
I think they might be high by one compared to Calaveras, but apparently Calaveras is probably picking up another person. That's probably the best, one of the best comparisons, so.
We haven't even looked for a motion.
Did we have public comment?
That's what I was going, yeah.
Yeah.
Any members of public like to comment on this item? Please come forward. And if would Alan state your name for the record and sign in?
Just in case somebody doesn't know who you are.
Uh-oh, good show now, no. Alan Amet, retired, road department.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You were here quite a few years, weren't you?
Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to comment, and I know Mr. Enno was talking about the roads and we're talking about DA's department, this and that. Haven't been here for almost twenty years. What we did on the roads when I first started has stopped on what we're doing now. I mean, it might be cost, might be this, we're down people. But honestly, the liabilities with people traveling our roads right now, which is crazy with the amount of traffic. And I'm fixing things and I'm telling you, it would launch cars. And I'm thinking the liability that the county has when these accidents happen and stuff like that. I mean, we all got to have everything in moderation, but we still got to fix these roads. We don't fix the roads, who comes to work? We don't plow the roads, who comes to work? I just want to say that, I mean, you got to reinvest. The equipment's old, you're short on people and people aren't getting picked up fast enough, but again, that's money. People got to go where the money is to support their families too. But honestly, I think we need to put more into the roads.
Well, I agree with you.
I got, I got pictures of some of the roads over there, you, I don't know how much, all of you travel around in the roads or not, but I, it's phenomenal. And the one big thing is there's no subgrade underneath these roads and when you go to repair it, there's a lot more expense than you think. Basically, we got roads that were paved over wagon trails. We haven't grown with the influx of travel.
I don't agree with that, Alan, they were, they were, they were donkey trails before they became wagon trails.
Well, that's true too. But, but honestly, we got more truck traffic, we got more people coming through when they shut down eighty.
And vehicles are heavier and now electric cars are really heavy.
Yeah, but I mean, that's something you need to look at. I mean, we can always put money here, put money there, but we still got to move around, get from place to place. I mean, I, I would hope you guys would take a little more on that, that fact and, you know, and come back and it makes a happier community too. You know, I hear a lot of comments where somebody goes, man, what have you been doing? I'm going, huh, I'm trying. But anyway, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Alan.
Mm-hmm. Any other members of the public? No Zoomers? Do we have a motion on that already? I thought we?
I'd move we approve the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year recommended budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Forster, second by Axe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to vote no, for reasons I stated. Moving down, item three B is Carbondale Road Bridge Replacement.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Richard Vila, Public Works Director. This is here just mainly for information. The, we have a number of bridge projects that we've applied for and got funding for. It takes a long time to get things to a point where we actually can get under construction and this is the one that we have going right now.
How many years have been roughly? It seems, seems like ten years at least?
Yeah, you start with your application and you get the approval, then you go through your environmental and.
It's kind of insane.
Yeah, it's, it's a long process.
I don't blame you, I mean, it's just something you got to try to work through.
Yeah, we have the rules we have to follow. That's, that's the, the fun part when you're using someone else's money to fix something, you go by their rules.
Well, actually, we're using our money too.
Well, yes, yes. So this is a replacement of the bridge on Carbondale Road. It, it crosses Willow Creek at this location is near the intersection with Forest Home Road. And starting today, that road, that, that crossing, that bridge location is going to be closed to, through traffic. And there's detour, signed detour in place, we've put out the notices out to the different agencies and such of the detour, provided them with a map and such, so that road will be closed at that point, probably till about mid-October. And, and at the time, we'll evaluate to see if it's at a point where it can be reopened. It all depends on, on the, on the progress of the project and whether it's at a point where it's safe to have vehicle traffic traverse over it. So, yep, so this is like, again, finally got one under, under construction. The detour shortened, I mean, all detours are a bit inconvenient, but in that area, it's, it's pretty sparsely populated and whether you, you can get to sixteen via Forest Home or if you're coming up Irish Hill, instead of heading west, you can head east and hit Carbondale and they go up to sixteen, so the detour is not that long and I, I think it provides, it provides people it's a minor inconvenience, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I think we're in pretty good shape with that in place. So again, this was just more for information than anything else. This project's, like you've been mentioned, has been in the books for a long time and was, was formally approved in, in last year's budget for moving forward with construction, so here we go.
What's the funding source for it?
It's federal highway bridge program funds. And that, those are, that, those funds are administered by Caltrans, so.
And you have to build it to their specifications, correct?
Yes.
I look, I look at this, this, the price and it's like two million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand and some change, I'm like, that's a lot of money for a bridge.
Yep. And that includes demolition of the existing structure. The new structure is going to be higher in profile, it's going to be about three, four feet higher than existing bridge to provide for adequate flow capacity in, in the extreme precipitation events. So there's a little bit of work there and, and also as part of the project is the, the culvert crossing Forest Home, right there at that location, that's going to be replaced as well. And that, if you've been in that area, Forest Home next down to about a lane and a half at that point, so that culvert will be replaced as part of the project as well.
That'd be nice, I think somebody wiped it out here, six months or a year ago, the guardrails and stuff.
Curiosity question, Upper Ridge Road, where are we on that, do you know?
The, we have received the funds from the state for that project and so we have those, we can get, we got those in advance, so we can do that, we got those in advance. And we'll be, our, our next step is to, to, to work with the, the consultant that was for the design of the project and to negotiate their, their contract services.
The selection has been made.
Right.
So now we just have to negotiate the contract and get them going on the design.
And are we expecting it this year, this building season or?
No, I would say two thousand twenty-five, be the most optimistic. If everything goes fairly smoothly, which it should with the design, we should be able to have that project out for bidding for construction for next constructions.
When do, when do we think we're going out for bidding for construction?
I, I couldn't tell you right now, I would imagine early next year. I don't want to tie the hands, the consultant yet because he hasn't gotten in, they haven't gotten into the design work, so it's about a six month on, on their request for qualifications that they submitted, their qualifications. They estimate about a six month process from the time they get the, the notice to move forward with their work till producing documents for bidding.
Okay. You know, Richard, I'd like to talk to you sometime, maybe two, about that project and maybe to replace and just replace and all culverts, they all got to be old, that's something.
We've replaced a couple on, on that road two, three years ago. And we've had, we've had inspections done on those culverts, so whatever ones that are, and we feel that need to have some replacement, we can certainly work that into the project.
All right, well, thank you. Any members of public like to comment on this issue?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank, thank. Yeah, come on, come on up, Alan.
Alan, he lives on the road, so he probably has a lot of comments.
We're going to exempt that area in front of Alan's house. No, I, I just had one thought on that, we were talking about them getting together on recently, you know, with PG&E doing the underground. Now that's marked there for underground also, down to the bottom edge of my property down there. I don't know if that was something thrown into the works or not, it was talked about that repave and what we ran into was shake ridge up there.
Oh, yeah, they've tore, tore the hell out of that road.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if there was a thought on that, Richard.
Kind of starting to get a little off, so.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I, I thought about that, if you get something done, then they come back in there, tear it up again, that's something they might want to throw in the mix on that.
Oh, yeah, Noah, it's, make sure they get that done before we fix whatever we're fixing.
Yeah, I, I don't know where their schedule is PG&E, you know, they, they're going to be way down the road a little bit or what, so.
Now, we don't know what PG&E's scheduling.
We don't want to wait.
It's going up. We don't want to wait too long.
Rates, I mean.
Yeah. So anyway, I.
Two point three million.
That'll cover the costs.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, sir.
Any other members of the public? Well, seeing none, we're going to move on to item three C, this Tri-County Wildlife Care. Discussion of possible action relative to requests from the subject entity for waiver fees associated with construction of a raptor complex to house birds of prey as they're rehabilitated. And I imagine Susan, you're going to talk on this, it looks like.
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are asking that you waive the fees that may be waived of nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents. Tri-County Wildlife Care has been operating in Amador County for thirty years now and we take in injured, ill and orphan wildlife. We take in lots of calls from the sheriff.
They haven't gotten into the design work, so it's about a six-month on their request for qualifications that they submitted, their qualifications. They estimate about a six-month process from the time they get the notice to move forward with their work till producing documents for bidding.
Okay.
You know, Richard, I'd like to talk to you sometime, maybe two, about that project and maybe to replace and just replace all the culverts. They all gotta be old. That's something.
We've replaced a couple on that road two, three years ago. And we've had inspections done on those culverts, so whatever ones that are, we feel that need to have some replacement, we can certainly work that into the project.
All right. Well, thank you. Any members of the public like to comment on this issue?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up, Alan.
Alan, he lives on the road, so he probably has a lot of comments.
We're gonna exempt that area from Alan's house.
Yeah.
No, I just had one thought on that. We were talking about them getting together recently, you know, with PG&E doing the underground. Now, that's marked there for underground, also down to the bottom edge of my property down there. I don't know if that was something thrown into the works or not. It was talked about that repave, and what we ran into was shakeage up there.
Oh, yeah. They tore the hell out of that road.
Yeah. I just...
I didn't know if there was a thought on that, Richard.
Kinda starting to get a little off, so...
That's a good question. Yeah. I thought about that. If you get something done, then they come back in there, tear it up again, that's something they might wanna throw in the mix on that.
Oh, yeah. No, it's... Make sure they get that done before we fix whatever we're fixing.
Yeah. I don't know where their schedule is, PG&E, you know? They're gonna be way down the road a little bit or what, so...
We don't know what PG&E's schedule is.
It's going up.
We don't wanna wait too long.
Rates, I mean.
Yeah. So anyway, I don't...
2.3 million. That'll cover the cost.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, sir.
Any other members of the public? Well, seeing then, we're gonna move on to item 3C. This Tri-County Wildlife Care discussion of possible action relative to requests from the subject entity for waiver fees associated with construction of a raptor complex to house birds of prey as they're rehabilitated. And I imagine, Susan, you're gonna talk on this, it looks like.
Yes, thank you.
There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are asking that you waive the fees that may be waived of $992.13. Tri-County Wildlife Care has been operating in Amador County for 30 years now, and we take in injured, ill, and orphaned wildlife. We take in lots of calls from the sheriff every day. And we have the opportunity to build a really huge cage that's 100 feet long, 20 feet wide, and 16 feet tall in keeping with California Fish and Wildlife regulations so that we are able to 100% rehabilitate eagles and osprey. In the past, we have rehabilitated them because we do have the special permit to do so, but we've had to send them out to other facilities, and it has not worked out well with the caging that they've had and the procedures that they've had. So we wanna be able to do everything from beginning to end.
There's actually a fishing game regulation and how big the cage has to be, huh?
Oh, my goodness, yes. Yeah, they...
I should've known better, that there would be.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, any...
Chief Building Inspector here. Can we bring Todd up?
Pardon?
Todd?
Yeah, Todd, they're...
He's hiding back there.
They're calling you.
I figured he got all dressed up today. He might as well come in.
Bring him to the podium, that's right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I provided some of the fees to her and showed her ones that the board could actually waive. Got that, so I would support it. I guess that's about really all I...
Right, so you wanna detail which ones we can and which ones we cannot?
I can do that, yeah. There's a planning review fee we can refund, which is 60 bucks, and then a building plan review, which is 31337. Our tech maintenance fee, we can authorize. 75 bucks for the issuance fee and 48211 for the actual building inspection fees. The state fees, we are not able to actually refund. The C and D deposit, it's initially $120, but that's refunded as soon as we final the building. So that would actually go back to them.
Okay, so how much those fees roughly that we could basically waive?
Yes, 990.
That was a number? Okay.
Yeah, just under a thousand.
Cover those fees one more time. The plan review was 60?
Yeah, the planning, plan review.
And what else is there?
Building, plan review, 31337. Technology maintenance fee, 6165. Permit issuance fee is $75, and the building inspection fee is 48211. And the design of this is very specific. It's gonna be a simple project for us. There's a lot of guidelines that tells specifically exactly what needs to be done and how it's to be done, so...
Yeah, I don't... Personally, I don't have a problem with it because it is kind of a community benefit type deal, so...
But in addition to the, I guess, the bird, the cage portion of it, there's gonna be like a facility for offices, veterinary, lab, or whatever.
We have a facility for the care of the critters. We probably have about 120 animals in care right now. And so that facility is already in place. It's the former bed and breakfast for Jackson Creek Vet Clinic. We have 4,500 square feet adjacent to this lot where we're...
Oh, okay, so you're just taking over that building?
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, okay. So, all right. Because it looked like you just had the raptorarium or whatever. And I'm going like, wow, you're gonna get kinda lonely out there. Okay, good.
Susan, do you know what's going in the Holman Center? And there would not be any conflict with whoever has bought that property?
No. Jeff told me that it was gonna be another car place, but they certainly are doing a lot of land work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, right now, we are talking to the new owner, and there is gonna be an auto body shop repair, basically another car place. They're gonna add some, a few things to the facilities, but it's in the works right now.
Similar use, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Any members of the public like to comment on this issue, item? Seeing then, what's the board's pleasure?
Remove approval of the waiver of the fees for the raptor complex.
Second.
Motion by Forster and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carry is unanimous. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down, let's see, item 3D. May 28, 2024. I'm board supervisor, meeting minutes.
We had a couple of minor corrections.
Yeah, I have one too.
Okay.
So removing approval with minor corrections, supervisor?
Is that a motion, Frank?
Okay, I'll make a motion then to approve the minutes with minor corrections.
Motion by Axe. There a second?
Second.
Seconds by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carry is unanimous. And we'll come back at 10:30 for our public hearing. Thank you. You wanna go back in?
Have a public hearing, wait a few minutes till it's ten thirty.
Okay.
Clause meeting back to order. The board met in closed session. Lost that there on item one A, county negotiations and direction was given. With that, we're going to move into our public hearing scheduled for 10:30. It's item four A, planning department consideration of the planning commission's recommendation to approve a variance from the 25-foot front setback requirement to allow construction in two-car garage and closed unconditioned entryway. With that, Ruslan?
All right, Ruslan Bratton with the planning department. So as you mentioned, yeah, this is a variance. This is a consideration of planning commission's recommendation to approve this variance. It would, the project would be approximately five foot six inches from the front property line. TRITAC met on April 12th and had no technical objections to the planning commission recommending approval. And then the planning commission met on May 14th and recommended approval of this variance to the board, subject to the conditions and findings below. Pretty straightforward. I believe the applicant is on Zoom. If you have any questions for that.
Okay, well, I guess at this time we'll open the public hearing. Any questions?
Remove to close public hearing.
Second.
Our motion by Forrester, second by Axe to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous. Looking for some action. Actually, one second. I failed to call for public comment, so any members of the public like to comment? Okay, seeing none. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the requested variance and adopt the recommended conditions and findings.
Okay, I have a motion by Axe and second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, 9 o'clock. Thank you.